Evening. It is six o'clock. It is the September 5th, 2023 Lakeville Select Board Meeting. We have members Carbone, Fabian, and Dave present, as well as Tom and Ashrair Sky, and a couple other folks will join us throughout the evening, as well as Tracy Craig McGee, our wonderful minutes taker. So we have a press on our Select Board announcements. Welcome students back to school. Oh, yep. And also, is there anybody besides Lake Cam recording this evening?
One, two, three, four, five, no.
All right, there we go. On to announcements. All right, welcome back to school students, and I think Mr. Sky will give us an update on one of the facilities a little later. On September 11th, there'll be an observance at 10:00 a.m. at the Lakeville Fire Station. Hope you guys welcome to attend. The Lakeville Lions Club Fall Family Festival will be happening on September 16th from 11 to 5:00 p.m. at their building on 170 Main Street, rain date of September 17th. This event is free to its hand, and we'll have a free bouncy house, kids' games, live music, base painting, dunk tank, and hayride. Food and craft beer will also be available. If you've ever liked to or wanted to volunteer on a commission committee, the town still has vacancies on the Conservation Commission, Cable Advisory Committee, Capital Expenditures Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, Energy Advisory Committee, and Open Space Committee. To apply, please visit the town's website on the Town Clerk's page where there is a volunteer form. Anything else you'd like to announce before moving to Ari? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Site work on the Gamache Playground took place last week, and fencing is scheduled to be installed next week. The playground should be open to the public within the next several weeks. Installation of the guardrail along the town-owned property on Kennethville Drive is underway. Management of 310 Kennethville Drive has instructed tenants to secure alternate parking regions. I drove by today, and it's probably about half done, but there's no more parking there. There's no space for it. The guardrail really goes up right against the road. The town's contract with Boston Tavern for the operation of Loom Pond Lodge is due to expire on March 29th. Park Commission is designated as a Turcot as a liaison. We'll be meeting with Town Council later this week to begin development of the RFP. Assawamsted Elementary School opened for classes on schedule this morning. More than 200 replacement windows have been installed. They look very nice. Work will continue on evening shifts as school's underway. Per the Select Board's direction, I've reached out to Free Town to gauge the town's interest in a joint meeting to discuss a recall provision for regional school committee members. I'm waiting to hear back on how that all plays out. The warrant for the November 13th fall time meeting closed on August 31st. There are no petitions submitted. Select Board is scheduled to consider the warrant as next meeting. And lastly, the next regular meeting of the Select Board will be at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, September 18th, here at the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for Ari?
No.
Okay. And I think we're all happy to see AES did get their priority zones done in the nick of time. So it looks nice. Glad to see it worked out in the end. So moving on to item number three, discuss and possible vote to approve Select Board minutes of August 21st, 2023, and August 29th, 2023. Did anybody have any comments on those minutes before we go to approve them?
I have a couple of comments on August 21st. If I may, Mr. Chair. First page, lower paragraph here, middle of the paragraph where it says, "With the transfer of the new owner," and the fee was already paid by the previous owner, and then it said, comma, "How does that?" So I guess we could put in, "How does that work?", question mark, because I know Tracy had said, you know, kind of explained that, but it just kind of stopped it there. And then lastly, on that one, on page 11, can you believe 11 pages of minutes? In the last paragraph, when we did the update and discussion on classification of compensation study, you know, when you're reading through this, we never really provided direction. Well, I mean, we did when we were discussing it, and I believe that if we add at the end, there was consensus to add the positions into the study that were originally excluded, because it doesn't really say that in the paragraph, and I believe we directed that to our town administrator.
I believe that is correct. That's what you came away with, isn't it?
That was page 11?
Yep, which is 16 in the packet.
That's all I had.
Okay. I had one item on the same page, 11. So Chairman Day said he forgot that there are positions outside the wage and personnel policy. I think, if I have to go back and watch, I meant to say, or I did say, I forgot that we were not including the positions outside of the wage and personnel policy.
Yes.
I think that's all. That's the only thing I had. Leah, did you have anything?
Um, nope.
Okay. Did anybody have comments on 29th minutes as well? I don't believe I did.
Yes, I did. If I may, page two, third paragraph down halfway.
Big paragraphs.
Over on the right where it says, it started, "Miss Craig McGee spoke of some of the clerical work that is needed." And then, "Member Carbone said, 'We have used an outside agency to scan and organize files.'" Yes, I did say that, but in reference to the comment that Ms. Craig had said spoke of some of the clerical work that is needed, and she hasn't filed anything in the Select Board's office for two years. And that's when I had suggested that, you know, perhaps we look at an outside agency if it was something that would help catch up on organizing those files. So just adding that, indicated she hasn't filed anything in the Select Board office for two years.
Page 2, I'm sorry.
It was page two?
Two, okay.
Right here. I don't know if I can add it there, because it just didn't make sense as to why I said that we've used an outside agency to scan and organize files. That's all I had.
Okay, I don't think I had anything for the 29th. Leah, did you have anything for the 29th?
Nope.
All righty.
Yeah, well, then I can make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of August 21st, 2023, and August 29th, 2023 as amended?
Yep. Second.
Okay, first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have a pass. Thank you. All right, we got seven minutes till we can meet with MG&E, so we'll move down to number five, discuss and vote to sign the surges contracts for paper and office supplies and apartment and public work supplies. So this is the second half of a two-step process. Is that correct, Tracy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, were there any further questions since we awarded the bids last time? I had none. We do have different expiration dates on here, so...
I can make a motion to award the following surges contracts. Paper with WB Mason to expire June 30th, 2024. Office supplies, WB Mason to expire June 30th, 2025. DPW Supplies, all expire June 30th, 2024. Oh, is that all the ones below that, Tracy?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Let me repeat. Let me start over. DPW Supplies, TL Edwards, Hut Mix FOB, LaRusso Corp., Dentsgrades Crush Stone and Three Quarter Stone, Dennis K. Burke, Mid-grade Unleaded Gasoline and Alter Low Sulfur Diesel, Ferguson Waterworks Catch Basin Extension Rings, John Holdley and Sons Incorporated Catch Basin Frames, including grates and Catch Basin Square Grates, to expire June 30th, 2024. Second.
Okay, first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's an easy. Thank you for reading that up. Appreciate it. Okay, still a few minutes. So number six, discuss and possible vote to approve a one-day beer malt license for Decanted Incorporated on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, for the Angers Conway Farm Festival. Tracy, I have one quick question. Do we know if there's a rain date, or is that rain-or-shine event? I didn't see one posted online or in the...
They didn't request a rain date, and, Mr. Chair, it is a beer and wine. I got my beer and my malts mixed up.
Beer and wine, sorry. Yes. And as you educated me, since they are a for-profit, they cannot also do malt in this instance?
They can do beer and wine, beer and malt. It's the same thing. Malt and beer, they use as the same thing. So they can do beer and wine.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have all of the paperwork that is necessary. This all looks like everything in here. Okay, any questions on this request? Looks like the hours line up with the event. I looked at their event before coming in.
All right, I can make a motion to approve the application for a one-day beer and wine license for Decanted Inc. for the Angers Conway Farm Festival, which is taking place on September 23rd, 2023, for the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Second.
Okay, first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, so 611. Sweet item number seven, discuss and possible vote to appoint John Lucy to the Community Preservation Committee. Is Mr. Lucy with us this evening?
I told him that it might be closer to 6:30.
Okay, maybe we can come back then, just in case. Somebody remind me not to scratch that up. All right, number eight, discuss and possible vote to accept the resignation letter of David Kramer from the Lakeville Arts Council.
I was a little sad to see that one. Dave's been there for quite a long time. He's been such a strong contributor.
20 years, it looks like, it's been for him. That is an impressive amount of service to the town.
I'll regretfully accept his resignation letter from the Lakeville Arts Council.
Okay, do you have a second?
Yep, second. Sorry, I was just reading the 20-year part.
That's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Reluctantly.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for all of your service to the town. 612, discuss and possible vote on a request from the Daughters of the American Revolution to issue a Constitution Week proclamation. All right.
Well, at least they got it in early this time. This is true. I think one time it was like almost toward the end of the week.
Oh, whoops. Okay. That's good. Is anybody from DAR here this evening? No? Okay. Would anybody like to read the proclamation?
I will.
All right.
Commonwealth, Massachusetts, Town of Lakeville, Constitution Week Proclamation 2023. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Lakeville, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, we have here on two, set our hands and cause the seal of the Town of Lakeville to be affixed on this fifth day of September 2023, and we will, once we take a vote, sign this Brian Day Chairman, Vigilia Fabian, Lauren Carbone.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Make that motion for that proclamation. Second.
All right, thank you very much. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. And you've brought us right to 615, so look how that worked out. All right. All right, so we've got at 615, which we just hit, a scheduled discussion with Middleborough Gas and Electric to discuss and a possible vote to enter into a license agreement with MG&E regarding the installation and operation of electric vehicle supply equipment in Lakeville. Just going to back up here in my packet. Do we have a representative from MG&E here this evening? How are you, sir? Could I bother you to come to a microphone for the record? And if you just repeat your name once more, that'd be fantastic. Well, all right, we all get used to it.
Kevin Boyle, Energy Services, Middleborough Gas and Electric. I handle all the EV programs.
Welcome, Mr. Boyle. How are you?
Good.
All right, so it looks like we've got an agreement in front of us to install some EV charging equipment at Town Hall and within Tull Williams Camp Park?
Correct, yes.
All right. Ari, do you have anything you'd like to say to this project thus far?
Well, we've been working for some time with MG&E to try to look at the possibilities of installing two EV chargers in town. Lakeville's kind of an EV desert when it comes to chargers. There's only basically one location north of the center of town. There are a number of Middleborough, but there are none, there's only one in Lakeville. So it's an opportunity to, for the Energy Services, to start to design a growing industry right now.
Correct.
And MG&E's been a very willing participant and partner in this, trying to build up an application proposal. We've come up with a process. We think we've come up with a thing here that doesn't really cost the town anything, and it's strictly maintained by MG&E, funded by, through grant, installation, and so on. But this gives an opportunity for residents to be able to charge their cars.
Yeah, it's what they like to call a utility-made ready program. So Middleborough Gas and Electric, as the licensee, will incur all the installation, operating, ownership, and maintenance costs associated. So no cost be borne on Town of Lakeville.
Okay, all right. Any members have any questions?
Two. So you have some at Town Hall in Middleborough, correct?
Yes.
What is the usage, the normal, like, daily usage, or even weekend usage?
It's, we see the same users over and over again. It's, you know, EV users are much more apt to charge at home, especially in Middleborough and Lakeville, because it's only 14 and a half cents kilowatt hour. So those behaviors are kind of, you know, kind of hard to shake, but we're hoping, you know, with the closeness to the 495 quarter and people coming from, let's say, Bridgewater or Carver who are paying, you know, national grid rates, there might be an interest to charge here during the day. So these programs are all from the Mass DEP, trying to get people to be more EV-friendly and open-minded to making that transition. So hopefully, with this, you know, the watered-grant, you know, we can get more and more chargers out there, so people are less hesitant, and they like to use the term range anxiety, a little range anxiety.
What is a typical length of time that somebody would utilize a charging station?
So for a Level 2 charger, it takes anywhere from three to 10 hours for the charge of an empty battery. So we try to discourage people from sitting on there all day long. So our pricing structure is generally, it'll be a dollar an hour. Once you hit hour number five, it jumps up to $6 an hour to try to get people off there, so they're not just leaving them overnight, or going off the day for work and, you know, taking access away from someone else.
Rules are still, all the rules about use of this facility still apply. People can't leave their car overnight, you know, and it's still going to be the same as it is now. It doesn't change that.
So would we have to have our law enforcement force that?
Two, they're already doing it, which is they patrol.
But they'd have to be brought into this conversation, should we approve this?
The point is that if there's a car in the parking lot now, they're already...
Yeah, they already pull out. Just, I mean, just to give them a heads up that this is, you know, something that was considered. The two locations that were selected, is there any particular reason why those particular spots were ideal?
Yep. First of all, ease to us. The infrastructure's already there. Over here at the Tull Williams, it's the lot between the tennis courts and Loom Pond Lodge off the Precinct Street side, but we already own a 40-foot pole that's right there, Pole 24A3 Precinct, and that has a 10 KVA transformer on it that could support the station, so it's minimal digging, you know, five or six feet of digging just to bury the conduit and the secondaries. And then the same thing with Bedford Street, the Town Hall. A lot of foot traffic, well, foot traffic for Lakeville, it's, you know, Lakeville's kind of spread out, but, you know, a good foot-traffic area. We have a pole off of Bedford Street there with a three-phase bank, so well more than we need for two Level 2 charges. Well, it's two Level 2 chargers with ports on each side, so technically four ports, but that's a three-phase bank with three 25 KVA transformers, and again, minimal digging just to bury the secondaries from the pole to the charging stations themselves. So ease to us, less infrastructure cost. We looked at, actually, right over here, but it would have been a whole pole, a padmill transformer, it would have been super expensive, and when that one's already set up and ready to go.
And I believe the Parks Commission had this discussion on their agenda at their last meeting. I'm looking at the location, because it's a function facility, so we do have a lot of, you know, private parties that do utilize that, that function hall, and then we do have our town elections during that time. I wonder if there would be an opportunity to not use the spaces right there, but maybe on the other side, where it's on the dirt, but on the other side of that pole?
So just block the driveway?
I'm just, I mean, if there's a different, you know, opportunity, because I would hate to, I mean, we do have a lot of elderly, you know, citizens that do, you know, take up those spots during the election, and that's why I was asking about usage and timeline.
To be honest, I think this site was identified just because of all the traffic for the games and practices and all that. I don't know how much it was taken into account of elderly parking taking that away from them, so.
And, but again, this is, that's a decision of the parks, you know, for them to decide if that, you know, layout is the best, but I think that that would be, you know, my only...
You're avoiding the handicap spaces, though.
Yes, yes, of course.
That would be my only concern there.
If it came to it, does MG&E have the ability to disable, enable these remotely? Like, if we had to work something out, say, on election days, we prefer to not have someone taking up a space all day?
So there will be ballards, cement ballards placed there. They will be painted. There has to be signage. That's according, you know, if the DEP requires that.
Yeah.
We could disable them, but it doesn't change that they would still be screaming EV chargers.
Oh, that's fine, but someone would pull up and say, "Oh, it's election day. I'm not sitting here for two or three hours," because they've been turned off for that. I'm not suggesting we do that, just if that's within the infrastructure's capabilities.
This site license was pretty in-depth, and I got through most of it. That, I believe, would fall under the licensor, to say, "We don't want these functional at such-and-such time." I could be wrong.
All right.
Okay.
I just wouldn't want to put a bunch of, like, you know, you guys have to come out and do a visit to do that, but if you can do it from back in the office...
And if somebody wants to park there, because you said it's an election, and that's your call, you're the licensor, we'll deal with the headache from the person saying they couldn't access it.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have been a great partner in so many things. I wouldn't expect any differently with this.
But, I mean, would, I mean, would we entertain just maybe looking at the opportunity of maybe looking at the gravel side of it?
Yeah, so we haven't put it out to bid yet, so any kind of cost to move it into a different location...
It's right near that pole. It's just on the other side, you know, because it's paved, you know, for the facility, and then there's the dirt area, but, I mean, not to block, obviously, that would have to be...
Yeah, it's right in the park.
Can it be done on a gravel, or do you need it because you have to put the post in? It has to be painted.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be, you know, that would be cost borne onto Lakeville. They would have to pay that.
Did you have a couple of questions?
No, I just want to offer a reminder. I'm not sure when it happened. It might have been even before the election, but I had given an update a few months ago from the MBTA where they were saying how the South Shore really doesn't have a whole lot of, you know, the MBTA and their, the state has been able to put a lot of charging stations in Boston proper, on the streets, on the Expressway, whatever, and that was a question that a lot of us from, you know, the suburbs had, was like, well, how are we supposed to get those types of, you know, locations? So it's almost coming full circle now, where if DEP's putting this out to work with the local energy companies, then, then the electric companies, then that's probably how they're going to try to fill the gap, at least initially, for trying to get some power stations here, because they're, you know, folks were saying, well, what is there between, you know, like, on 495 all the way to the Cape? Nothing, you know, so maybe that's how they're going to try to fill in through these types of programs.
That's the intent of the program, is to try to make people less fearful of getting on a road trip with an EV.
Yep. Is there a map, like, an app, or something that...
Plugshare, Plugshare, and we, our Level 2s in Middleborough are ChargePoint, so ChargePoint has their track ones, but yeah, Plugshare is much more encompassing.
So what was your name, sir? Thank you, sir.
That, I spoke myself with Steve Kane. That's going to be private. So that's his baby. He's, I don't know, that's coming out of his pocket. I don't know what his charging rates are going to look like, but that's privately done. That wouldn't have anything to do with us, yeah. Middleborough has secured Level 3 chargers that will go, again, Town Hall, Nickerson Street, Pearl Street, Public Lot, and Jackson Street for the playground.
Just curious, any final question? How many EVs are in Lakeville?
So I've tried to reach out and get this estimate. I can say it's in the hundreds, not in the thousands. It's relatively still growing, but it's tough to get an accurate number because it's private information.
Well, are they all home charged, then? You have that record?
Yeah, I think the number is 90, 95% charge at home.
How many home chargers are there?
If they didn't...
Can we, either you have to come sit up at a mic so we can get the minutes done, or that'd be great. Thank you. A couple of quick questions, sir. You just mentioned something I was going to ask. Is there any reason why not to do Level 3 chargers? It sounds like maybe this location didn't have the transformer, but...
No, it's actually environmental justice, so there's no EJ community in Lakeville. So we only got the grant funding because we put the three charging stations in the environmental justice area in Middleborough. A barrier to people adopting these technologies is it kind of only serves those with means, so if you can find a way to engage lower-to-moder income people, the state's going to be much more generous with the money they give, so that's why they awarded that. It had to be in an environmental justice community.
But does that define it has to be a Level 2 charger, not a Level 3 charger?
Level 3, the direct current fast charge is only for EJ community. This, for Lakeville, we can only get a grant for, or we can only apply for a grant for Level 2.
Oh, okay. That's unfortunate.
The license, if I'm wrong, the license allows for possible upgrades in the future?
Yes.
So if you have the access to Level 3s, you really can go on?
If they open up this program and started handing out more money for Level 3s, and they open it up to who can receive them, yeah.
Ongoing, hopefully.
That's, it's actually funny you bring it up, is we like Bedford Street a lot, because there's three phases right there. If we wanted to go Level 3 in the future, it'd be super easy, just to have them right next to the Level 2s.
Get people off of it quicker, too, if they can take advantage of it.
You can get a full charge in two or three hours on one of those.
This might be a little too early, but the North American Charging Standard plug's still kind of going through approvals and such. Is that something that these already have or could have in the future?
In the grant, they have to have the CSS and the CADMEO, so that encompasses all makes and manufacturers. The only one, of course, is Tesla, but they now sell their own adapter that can plug into those.
Right, but in a few years, everybody's going to start rotating for that plug, so...
Yeah, that I'm not too versed on.
That's okay. That's okay. I guess that might have been too early. So we do have a lot of park members here. Chairman Turcot, were there any specific questions from the parks at your meeting?
I just wanted to make sure we had saved the end parking space as a handicap spot for the playground, so I just wanted to make sure that we could push the EV charging stations down to spaces so we could keep that end in the future handicap space.
Is that...
The one at the end, at the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably doable. It just says DPW already weighed in. If they can make that a handicap spot easily?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, already has the lines there for the van, so our future plan, after we come to you guys, is to put a crosswalk right there at the end, going right from that spot right across to the playground walkway.
I mean, that, actually, if, if it's the pole, I see the shadow on your picture, then it would make it look like one of them gets even closer to the pole. I don't know if that's something that could be considered.
And it's, it's on us to, to run the conduit, so a few feet is, it's, it's not going to, we make it hot in the meter after the meters, when whoever wins the bid, the lowest responsive responsive-
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get that bid in, so we're, we have to make it accessible for them to wherever it needs to be.
Okay, alright.
Not a huge, huge deal, a little more digging.
Alright, okay. So, um, were there any other concerns from your meeting, Elliot?
No, we thought it was a good, a good thing to bring more people to the park, it helps fill a need that we have in Lakeville and maybe get people that are going back and forth to the Cape, into the upstate New York and all the other tourist places can stop by, check us out.
Sounds good.
Maybe we can put up signs, welcome to Lakeville.
There you go. Stay around for a little while.
Speaking of signs, is there a number on these things, if they can call if there's an outage or equipment broken or that doesn't go to our town hall?
Yeah, we, no, we, we don't have a specialist onboard who does that stuff. This will be whoever is the company that puts in the charging stations, that's their responsibility.
Okay, and do you have some kind of service contract with them saying how fast they have to respond?
Yes, yes. So it's, I mean, I, I don't know what it looks like with a ChargePoint, we got that through a company called Voltrack and Lawrence, those are the level two in Middleborough, but they've been fantastic.
Nice.
We actually said they didn't win the bid for level threes, they wrote bid, so.
I have just a couple of quick, quick follow-up questions.
Sure.
So just to confirm, there would be two spots over here at, um, at Ted Williams and two spots over at Town Hall.
Two stations, yeah.
Two stations.
Four, four.
Four spots.
Sorry. And then, secondly, is there, I didn't see it, but, you know, when you're reading for legalese, it's hard to determine. Um, the agreements, are they, is there a term on these?
Twenty years.
It's a twenty year, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Um, let me break, can you, um, can you make sure that the parking is not being taken away for elections? Because we have a heavy year next year and I can't afford having that taken away.
It sounds like, um-
Which whereabouts has that's taking place in the parking lot?
So it's pretty much the line spots that you usually have your no polling beyond this spot. Um, so not the gravel parking lot that you could turn left into, but just as you get to the pavement, there's four spots immediately to your left, so you're right there. I haven't imagined-
So it's on, on the precinct three side?
I think I have.
I might have printed one out, I can show you. Of course, it cuts off the spots into the-
I'm going to-
Melissa has it.
Oh, perfect.
Will Bill make adjustments, William, during election time?
Keep in mind, we have a presidential election.
Bill will make adjustments during election time.
I'm sorry?
Bill will make adjustments during election time. In other words, yeah, just because the chargers are there at that time, you can shut them off at certain times, you may be available for townies or whatever, I did.
Yeah, so any days that you've got a, you know, preliminary or something, we can send that information ahead of, you guys all have the same preliminaries that we do, but, you know, we can send that over and make a request.
This is, this is, this year coming up is a heavy year for all four elections. Town election, presidential power, state election, November election. Keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
One more thing, um, did they, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, Melissa, did, um, did the parks vote to approve this? Did you have a vote on record or?
Um, we do not have a vote because we weren't asked for a vote, we were asked for any concerns that we may have.
Right, because I know that this board, you know, would, would be the voting body, but I just wanted to make sure that we had, you know, that there was support and this one.
Yeah, it is on the record.
Okay.
Just not a vote.
But just consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, um, if there are no further questions?
I'm sorry, one more question, please?
Yes, sir. Let's, let's make this one the last if we can and we'll-
Is there any ability to use a solar farm to charge these cars instead of power from the grid? I mean, just to think about if there's a farm in Middleborough, Lakeville, excuse me?
If, if there was, I, I, I would be speaking out of school if I said we could do that right now, that would have to be a conversation for higher-ups than me, but there, there are, there is community solar in Lakeville, behind LA Farms and other places, but I couldn't give you a, an accurate answer on that right now.
All good?
I'm good.
Alright. Appreciate you taking the time, Ben.
Thank you, appreciate it.
He was there for a few minutes there. Oh, thank you. Alright.
So if we're ready, I mean, I'll make the motion.
Sure.
Um, I'll make the motion, um, the town of Lakeville, um, to enter into a license agreement with Middleborough Gas and Electric Department regarding the installation, operation of electric vehicle supply equipment in Lakeville.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Thanks again, sir, thanks MG&E, you're a good partner as always. What's a, is there a timeframe on these, you know? Sorry, I should have asked that before.
No, it's, it's, it's rolling, so once I have site licenses that are signed, we, we can't obviously move forward until we know it's okay with you. Once we have those signed, we can forward it onto the state and then get that back in queue. But it is, it's rolling bids, I'm sorry, rolling applications, so-
Gotcha.
Once they get it, it just gets us in the queue, it doesn't have a timeline until we get awarded the funds.
Alright, great, yeah, if you just keep us up to date, because if that date looks like it's going to encroach on a voting day, we might say, can we wait a little while?
Yeah, and we have 24 months to make them active once the fund, funds are distributed, so it's plenty of time.
Alright, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, should we go back to seven or do number 10?
Seven's good.
Alright. Go back to seven, discuss the possible vote to appoint Mr. John Lucy to the Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Lucy, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Would you mind coming up to a microphone just to make it easier for our minutes?
Over here.
Uh, there, there, you got-
You got your pick.
Yep.
Any of these have microphones?
Fielder's choice. Uh, name and address to the record if you don't mind?
John Lucy, 43 Stetson Street, here in Lakeville.
Welcome, sir. Um, we received your interest in serving on the Community Preservation Committee, I was just wondering if you could give us a short summary of why you think that'd be a, a great fit and how to get to the town?
Well, I've lived in town about 20 years and really have not been involved in much, I've kind of ate political, but, um, uh, as this, things have developed in town, um, I was talking to a couple of members of the, on the committee now, and, um, they inquired if I would be interested in, in helping out the town, um, in serving on the committee, especially with, you know, some of the issues that are going to be forthcoming with residential development and high-density development. And, um, I'm what I call semi-retired attorney, um, and my background is extensive in commercial and residential real estate, um, very familiar with the financing process for development. I've actually, in, in the past, have done development myself, so I've kind of been on both sides of that, um, uh, process. Um, and I, and I just think I could contribute at this stage, um, to the town and, um, add some input. I've also served, had a stint as town councilor at Berkeley years ago, so I'm familiar with municipal law, I, I've done a lot of municipal law and all that, so I figure I've got a little bit of everything that might come up, um, as far as this, uh, community preservation.
You better be careful, if you keep telling us what you know, we'll start coming to you-
No, I'm already taking notes. Oh, you'll be good for this, sir.
Uh, do our members have any-
Pick what's left of my brain, huh?
Yeah, why not, right?
Uh, do members have any questions for Mr. Lucy?
I, I do, actually. Um, I know that the position at large, um, you know, had like a housing component, um, you know, to that, and, um, you know, and where you have, you know, some background in, you know, real estate and commercial, um, I'm assuming that that checks that box.
I think so. I also did have represented, um, the bad side, I guess landlords in the past and matters at the housing court, so, I mean, I, I know the process, I know what, what the rights are on both sides, and, um, so I've got a little bit of that too, in my background.
You're probably not coming in cold. No.
Did you have any questions?
Um, not really questions, just, you know, um, it's definitely, um, it's difficult because a lot of us in town really want to try to preserve a lot of open space, but we know, you know, the state laws on housing and everything, so, um, I would just say that, you know, if you feel frustrated, don't quit. Um, you don't seem like that type of person, in any ways you seem like the type of person that would work through something, but, um, you know, it can be frustrating because there's, you know, a lot of folks, it took us three times to get the CPA passed in Lakeville, and it finally did, and, you know, a lot of us are very happy about that, some folks not so much, but, um, you know, we just really need some good folks to be, you know, and it can be frustrating all around with, um, I mean, I, I appreciate the CPA and what it stands for with the designations, the three designations, but sometimes that can be frustrating too, and sometimes CPA has to work with other communities, the town has to get funding sources from, you know, other, so there, it can be a lot, but I really appreciate the fact that you're stepping up, so.
It, it seems to me that the, um, committee is a work in progress because it's-
It's new, yep.
And, um, it is, but it's going to take some effort to get it up and, and, and running.
Yep.
And, and just to, to be clear too, to make sure you understand the role and my members, and I keep you correct here, I mean, the, the CPC I look at is more of a trustee of the CPA funding itself, so it's not specifically defining policy on land usages and such, or what kind of development should be taking place, but it's taking in, it's, it's defining policy on how they will evaluate projects that are brought before them by residents or other committees, and then passing them through multiple levels of analysis before eventually bringing it to Town Hall, Town, Town Hall meeting for-
I, I understand that, it's not a standalone committee as far as any regulatory authority that goes.
Okay, excellent.
It's almost advisory, I think, at this stage.
Good, glad. Hear that? Alright, any other questions?
Nope. I'll make a motion to appoint, um, John Lucy to the Community Preservation Committee for a term that would expire on July 31st, 2025. Second?
Alright, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Lucy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could I just explain, Mr. Lucy, um, so you'll be getting a letter in the mail, um, with your signed appointment form, and then you'll just take that appointment form to the town clerk's office, and she'll sway you in and she'll give you like some new committee member information and things like that.
Okay.
Okay, look for it next week.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Alright, back to 10. Alright, Member Carboni, you had asked for this one, so I'll let you drive.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hold me to the town clerk, treasurer collectors. So I appreciate you, um, you know, uh, taking the liberty to, um, add this as an agenda item for discussion. Um, I, it's funny, I heard it was today that we're going to a, a four-day work week.
I'd like to.
Yeah. Um, so my, my intent on this was, um, to take a look at the current hours that each of our departments have, um, available for our constituents and residents for service. Um, and, you know, looking at this, I thought maybe there's an opportunity for us to try to align the hours so that it's, uh, the same across the board, to make things a little easier, because you can take, as you can see, um, and just for the audience, I had put together just a little spreadsheet of each department, took all the hours that were on the website for each of those departments, um, just put them in the spreadsheet for each day, and then tallied the hours that would be available to the public, uh, for each day, and then, uh, a sum for the week, what would be available for, um, for the residents. And as you can see, uh, that, you know, they're kind of all over the place, we have some nine o'clock starts, we have eight o'clock starts, um, and we have a seven o'clock start. I know that there are some departments that, you know, like our, uh, Public Works Department, our transfer station, and the Public Library, and the Senior Center have very specific hours, um, you know, dedicated to their, uh, I guess specialty, yeah, their specialty departments. Um, but everybody else that would be, I guess, more considered administrative, just, kind of, they're all, kind of little, all over the place. And I know that our treasurer, um, tax collector and our town clerk office used to have extended hours one night a week, um, for residents to come in, and I know that we, we've had this kind of discussion, you know, a little bit here and there, that there's a, a concern about safety, and I, I'm, I totally understand that. Um, where was I going on this one? Um, but COVID came along, and so we had to kind of realign our hours, and, again, I don't even really know, other than what I look on the website, what our, you know, hours are for our departments. So I just wanted to bring this forward to the select board to take a look and say, hey, how can we better serve as our, our, um, residents and possibly, and, you know, have the town administrator take a look and maybe come back with a-
The question I might have is when, when were we last open late, was it pre-pandemic?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Chair, can I ask?
You can, but I just wanted to add something quick before we get into discussion.
Because I think, um, the Monday night traffic is what you're looking at.
So, torn January 27th, 2020 is the last time.
Correct, yeah.
Um, it might be worth investigation of how much, not even just what these folks came in for, but like how much stuff we've now moved online since then as well, like if, we would see these numbers reduced even more potentially, I don't know. Um, so that was a strong effort, I, sadly, I don't think I come in to see either of you, I just pay everything online and apologize, but it costs less to do it online than pay the gas to come down and say hi. Um, Leah, did, do you have any, or do you have any thoughts, Leah, before we?
Um, so I definitely understand Lillian is coming from as far as the, you know, the hours. Um, I'm, you know, I, the assessors, I guess, they do their own thing, because they're their own board, they manage their own department, I mean, we could make a suggestion to them to try to be in line with us. Um, but as far as the Monday night hours, we had that conversation even back in 2019 that, you know, we were saying, gee, do we even need these hours? Um, and you're absolutely right, Brian, there's so much more being done online now that I, I have never heard one person say to me, how come Town Hall isn't open late one night a week anymore? Um, I think, I think people are more interested in knowing when early voting is than actually needing the services of the town clerk, um, but I honestly don't know. So for me, the Monday night thing was something that we talked about even four years ago, back in 2019, because we did ask, and this is what we found, was that, you know, we had just like one person or, and I do know, even back then, Lillian would make appointments with people on almost any night if it was needed for them, if they called her and said, called her and said, gee, we both work, we need a marriage license, you're very accommodating to people, so I think if we put on the schedule, you know, something like, you know, in a whatever circumstance, please call, we can try to make an appointment, so I mean, I think we can cover it, but as far as, I know your point, Lorraine, I just don't know how we align everybody.
Right, but I'm not saying it's just these two offices, these two offices were the ones that were open late, and I'm not singling those offices out, I'm just saying that, you know, perhaps, you know, and I think I made a note down here, that, you know, some of other municipalities, you know, work on the schedule where they have, everybody works one day, they come in at 10:00 and then, you know, work till 6:30, it's all departments, it's the Board of Health, it's the Building Department, and I don't know if that's a flavor here, but I didn't, I don't want to say just the town clerk or just the treasurer's collector's office would have extended hours and nobody else.
Yeah, the, like, if we look at the, I appreciate you putting the work in to grab all these hours, by the way, that was not easy of it, there is a good amount of alignment until you start getting into the assessors' office, which, like Leah said, they're their own elected board, you're your own elected department, and HR and accounting, don't they see much public?
Right.
Right, so like, they kind of wash out of the equation for me, I think, I would maybe like to see, instead of we, instead of first thing, extend hours one particular day, is there any daytime alignment that would be better to start with just making it easier for residents to know is Town Hall open or closed?
And I think that.
Instead of like, oh, it's 4:30 for that one, and I show up at 4:45.
Right, and that's, and that's where I'm going, that if we can, you know, create some kind of consistency across, you know, the departments, it would certainly make life a little easier, I think, for our residents, saying, oh, you know, Town Hall's open from, you know, from 8:00 to 4:30, or.
Which, which both their departments are aligned to the hour and half hour right now.
Right.
Many appear to be.
And, you know, and when you look at this, and I know this is a little off, you know, just the hours that were open to the public, so, you know, with the treasurer, collector, town clerk, you know, even with a health, you know, they work 8:00 to 4:30, so they work the eight-and-a-half-hour days, and then the four hours on the Friday, you know, for a total of 38 hours, but that's not staff hours, you know, the staff, I believe you guys come in a lot earlier.
There's lunch in between that, so.
Oh, and then there's, and there's the lunch.
So they leave at 5:00, so you have some employees that leave at 5:00. So can, can I just elaborate a little bit more on the hours? So historically, I've been in the Town Hall since 2020, uh, since 2000, so since 2005, I've been working late Monday nights, that was in the treasurer's office and also in the town clerk's office, now, as two offices that were elected, we took it under advisement, that we would stay open late, a late night, and that's because the services back then, we didn't have drop boxes, we didn't have online payments, and we didn't have all these things that we're offering now after COVID, as you can see on the server that we've taken, we had, people didn't really come in for any of that, even without those services that we didn't have, now that we have online payment, and I know the treasurer's office has that also, we don't have that demand anymore, since COVID, I haven't had any, anyone complaining, oh, you're not open until 8:00, or you're not open until 7:00, I've been very accommodating, whether it's 5:00 or 4:00, 5:30, whatever it is.
Can I ask a question? How long has someone been able to register to vote when they get their license? Can't you register at the registry?
So now that, since the, the votes after 2022 has changed that, it's automatic voter registration, so when you go to the registry, they do that automatically, and it comes through my state computer, through my queue.
Yes.
So they don't even have to come in.
So even that, they don't have to be, there's other ways they can register.
Oh, yeah, through the secretary's day, through the registry of motor vehicle, that piece of paper that they think they need to come in is no longer, it's available, but hardly anyone comes in and does that.
Even, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, we need to extend to, you know, to evening hours, if, you know, it's not a call for it, but I would certainly like to have consistency across all, you know, the departments if we can to.
Because, like you said, some are based on other regulations, like library has to have a certain number of hours for their state certification, I mean, I'm looking at this right now, our department is probably one of the ones that's misaligned, many are open at 8:00 or 8:30, and we're open at 9:00 to 5:00, so we've got 36 hours versus 38 for many of the others.
Mr. Chairman, I think the reason for that, Tracy can go help me with this, is that it has to do with staffing, the senior accountant as well, it's the number of hours that the, that the, my employees work in those offices.
I guess I'm not following.
Well, Tracy, for example, right, you work.
32 hours.
32 hours, and Marie Catalana works 32 hours.
But the rest of our, those offices are, well, I know, we have a, an accountant that's.
I'm just saying the rationale, I mean, this, this will happen, these all predate my tenure, at least these hours.
Right, but, you know, it's just, you know, trying to align the hours to support the residents and, you know, and have everything consistent, you know, but also be able to account for the hours, I guess.
Well, I mean, we, we could ask Ari to see if there's any, any way to scrounge two hours out of our department or not, and then we'd be in line with the 38 of everybody else, if it's a staffing issue, I don't mean issue in a negative way, just if that's the number of hours that certain employees work, there might not be a way to squeeze that out, I mean, assessors is the real kind of outlier, but I know they're also out in the field a lot, so that might be part of why they're not hopefully available quite as much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I just add that my concern is, if you're going to be changing the hours, be consistent, make sure that those, when we open the doors at 8:00, that we are servicing everybody, everybody should be at their window for 8:00, and we're closing at 4:30. If you're going to implement a late night, it's not only my office or the treasurer's office, it should be everybody.
Right.
Just like, let's say, for example, Rayham, they choose one night a week to stay open, and that's everybody, I'll take it under advisement to stay late at night, but I'm not going to entertain it, because my office doesn't need that anymore, and I don't know about the treasurer's office, the services are there, it hasn't stopped after COVID, we have improved it, but if you're going to implement a late night, I appreciate it because throughout the whole Town Hall.
That would be my, my thoughts anyways, that trying to.
Yeah, I mean, people are listening tonight, I'd be curious what residents think about whether or not they've been looking to come in at 6:00 or 7:00 on a certain night or not, I don't think I'm ready to ask for a late night, especially where we see there was 16 and four visitors between the two departments.
And also, that will affect my, my budget when it comes to early voting, it has to reflect my office hours, so that means I have to pay my poll workers those extended hours as well, so I've got to scramble for more poll workers, and then I have commitments after work after 4:30 as well as my assistant, so, and I'm pretty sure, you know, other people as well, so I think it's going to be a little bit difficult, and then you have unions, I guess.
I was just going to reiterate what Lillian said about the online, we have the online,
we have the Dropbox, so I personally never heard somebody needing to come into the office after 4:30, nobody's reached out directly, because I would definitely entertain, I mean, if someone had a, I don't know, got in a traffic jam or whatever and couldn't get there, I would definitely stay for them.
Yeah, I expect that you would.
And I, I mean, I'd like to add too that, I think in the past, folks wanted to go to the treasurer's office to get that stamp, honestly, that says paid, and I think even those of us who are older, you know, who aren't like my kids, who have always just been around technology, even I've, I like coming by to see you, but I don't really need that stamp anymore like I did in the olden days, I mean, we used to have how many people pay by cash back in the olden days, and even that's, even that's changing, you know, they.
It's definitely shifting to more online.
Yeah.
More credit card, and I just feel like with, you know, that elderly population just kind of shifting and getting more younger people that are willing to pay, I personally don't like the credit card fee, but that's my choice, somebody else wouldn't mind it, like, I know my siblings are younger than I am, they've always had it, so they don't mind paying it, I think as you shift the demographic, it definitely shifts how people pay.
Does accounting tend to have any interaction with the public?
It's entirely internal.
That's mostly internal.
Occasionally, there'll be outside parties, but there'll be usually other governmental parties or vendors.
Sure, sure, and HR, I assume, is primarily employed to HR or applications?
Yeah.
The only other thing that I think about the treasurer's office is, like, that first excise tax commitment is usually huge that goes out, that's the first excise tax, it comes out, you know, but the first one is the biggest one, I, I mean, I think in this case, you know, I could depend on the department head, so our treasurer right here to say, gee, I don't think we're offering enough hours, I mean, if you haven't said that yet because it hasn't been a problem, then I think people are finding a way to pay their bill.
This will be, so I've done two already of the big commitments, this will be going on to my third, and we haven't had a problem, I've never heard anybody complain, and as to your point about the paid stamp, we've actually told people that if they forgot their, you know how you have to bring the top portion of the bill?
Yeah.
Bring it back and we will stamp it for you, even if they paid by check, because some people do like to see the stamp.
Stamp, yeah.
And we will date it if you bring it back with the date you paid it.
Nice.
That's good. So, you know, I know that there's, you know, based on, you know, contracts or, you know, wage and personnel for positions for hours work, so, you know, the hours that, you know, we would be open to the public certainly don't support the hours that people would be, you know, working for their schedules, so this is hours open to the public versus what the staffing would be for your departments, but you do come in early though, right?
Because they get paid a lunch, keep that in mind.
Right, right.
So.
So your office does work the 8:00 to 4:30?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, we open 8:00 to 4:30.
Right.
If you drive by, I'm still there.
Right, of course.
And early.
And if you drive by there at 6:30, I'm there, so.
You should get an EV and use the charger, because you'd be there long enough. I mean, outside of Select Board and maybe Assessors, I think that's probably, if we're looking at alignment, those are probably the departments with the most alignment opportunity, you know, for those who deal with the public, HR, accounting, I kind of, it's in my head, I forgot to add the Planning Department hours, I know somebody sent us those recently, but they're a very small department and sometimes out in the field.
I think, Ari, you said they were 9:00 to 5:00, right?
9:00 to 5:00, yeah.
But it's just not up on the website.
12, right, oh, they, it's a little strange, though, because they do support a lot of boards, so they have a lot of late meetings, so there are occasions when that office is dark in the morning.
But not currently a heavy foot traffic department, as far as I know.
No, especially not nowadays, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I mean, instead of going on and on about this, do we just want to ask Ari if he wants to see what it would take to align our department, if it's even possible, and reach out to Assessors to see if, if there's a specific reason, the way they're set up, that they are? Is that feasible for now, or?
Yeah, but I also think that our office isn't one that has a lot of foot traffic either, most folks try to contact us through email or just a straight phone call.
Well, yeah, it doesn't say heavy, heavy phone traffic, which currently requires us to be there.
Yes, that will not, that will not be soon, though, soon, soon, we'll be going to the auto tenant.
Right, I hope so, I really hope so.
It will be happening.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd say 85% to 90% of our foot traffic is for the town clerk or treasurer's office.
Yeah, it is, it's true.
We usually have appointment-only people that come in.
Okay.
Personally, I would like to see all, all the departments with the same hours.
Which might have budget impact.
You can ask the town administrator to show the implications of that.
Yep, you sure could, I mean, we could use the 8:00 to 4:30 as kind of the standard here, that's what most people are already following today, you need a couple more hours in Select Board, you need eight more hours at Assessors.
I think Assessors would be a bigger challenge, Assessors, I don't think it's possible with current resources.
They've only got one and a half, or is it twofold?
One and a half.
One and a half.
I, I just don't think it's, not, not possible to get them to do that.
Right.
But we do have a contract with them, with the firm, and they're in the office too, correct?
And every day they're on.
And actually.
They're multiple clients.
I know it was this way, but the assessing specialist, he usually works till 4:00 on Friday.
He's in the field a lot.
Yeah, because he's in the field a lot, but he needs that time to catch up on the stuff that's, so it's not like we could keep that window open.
Right.
Consistently, and that's technically not even his job, working the window, so.
Okay, any other comments? Want to reach out and see if that's even feasible, Ari?
I think it's feasible with enough money.
Right, well, I mean, what's, what would the impact be, I think?
People wanting to do it, and staff willing to do it, are you talking about just Select Board and Assessors, or are you talking about every office in Town Hall?
All offices, 8:00 to 4:30.
All right, well, that's, that means accounting as well, you're going to have an issue. I mean, you have one person there full-time.
Yep. All right, so no other comments then, I appreciate the two of you coming this evening. Thank you for the evidence as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. All right, we're on to number 11, discuss impossible vote on revisions to annual Town meeting, Article 14, recall when elected official is requested by Senate Council, and I think there was one?
There's just one change, Mr. Chairman, it's just, if I could get the comment from the Senate, and it's, their concern was strictly that the Elections Division typically raises concerns about recall elections being scheduled based on the date of certification, because the timeline is certainly somewhat predictable at that point.
Okay.
So what they proposed, which is a standard, is make it 90 days from when, on the day which Select Board calls for the election, that's the only change.
Okay, all right, and that came from Elections Divisions.
It came from Senate Council.
Well, it says that their comments of the Elections Division raise concerns with.
Right, it's in the past, yeah, I don't think, I don't think they ran this specifically by the Elections Division.
No, 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 but they did give us a couple precedents of other acts.
That's correct, they did.
Any questions on that one minor change?
To accept it, is that what you're saying?
Yes, which.
You can go to accept in all that House, Senate Council, that works there.
Which, for anybody that is trying to go through this, red line, blue line, copy, it's under what used to be called originally D, the recall election, about two-thirds down the paragraph, it originally said, I'll do my best, given all the commenting, if any other town election is set to occur within 90 days, the date of issuance of said certificate, the Select Board may at their discretion postpone the recall election to the date such other election, they're just simply changing that to 90 days after the date on which the Select Board calls for said election.
Make it clear for the public's sake, the, the, the provision has requirements for the Select Board, the Select Board can't just decide not to call the election.
Right, right.
There, there are requirements the Select Board do with a certain period of days as well.
Okay. Will you have any questions or concerns on that change?
Nope.
Okay, Lorraine?
Nope, I can just understand it better, I know it's all over the.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a lot.
I guess a clean ver, you know, version will be more palatable for the eyes.
So if we accept this, this now is going to go back to House?
And House and Senate Council have both signed off.
Okay.
And it'll be good to go, that's what it's going to bring into the legislative document.
So they can then bring it to the next phase?
Bring it to committee.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the edits by Senate Council that was presented to us.
Second.
All right, well, is it a first and a second, or just a second?
Oh, did you say I entertain emotions?
Yes.
I thought you said I make emotions, sorry.
No, it's okay.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, appreciate the House and Senate's work on this and pushing this forward, and we're down to Building Committee updates, first up is the Senior Center feasibility study of their. Have there been any other meetings with Fahey?
I think Ari has an update that I didn't get to read quickly enough, so I'll entrust it to him.
Okay, next meeting is on the 13th. There's been a subcommittee meeting, which has been talked, which has been discussing sort of needs and, and want to haves and things like that with the OPM. There are seven seniors that were in that group with Ms. Fahey, and they're going to, she took the liberty of inviting them to the next committee meeting on 13th, when the OPM is going to present its overview of findings and so on. So that's what's coming up on that.
Okay, nice. Any questions on that, for moving to fire station?
Okay, the fire station building committee has received, my gosh, five?
Four.
Four?
Two of them, you heard what I said.
I just had a moment. Of the RFQs that have gone out for the architectural design firm. So we'll be meeting, we have a scheduled meeting on the 20th of September to review those and discuss how we're going to set up the interviews for those, whether it's, you know, only to view all four or identify two or three. The committee will decide that. And then once we get the architecture design firm on hand, then we can start to really get into some, you know, more meat of the project.
Nice, all right. Any questions for moving to Old Colony? Okay, Old Colony feasibility study. So we just learned today that on August 30th, the MSBA did formally invite Old Colony Regional High School, Technical High School into the feasibility study process. So that's big news that they have now been officially invited after all the member towns passed a town meeting to move forward with the project. So now they're going to be focusing on kind of right sizing the high school, trying to determine what are their needs. Will they be adding additional programming, leaving it the same? And then going through that feasibility study to figure out what the right thing to do is, whether it's an addition, remodel, fore-rebuild, we'll see. So that just started. It didn't look like there was a next step on what we'd be doing, so I'll reach out to Director Polansky and see what the next thing that happens is going to be. All right.
Can we get an email?
We just got one today.
Just today.
Yeah, this afternoon. I think it went to Austin Fincom?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on. Do we have any new business or old business that probably come before the board? No? Okay, I mean, I don't think we had any correspondence. No? Okay, if there's no other discussion, I want you to have a motion to close the meeting at 7:13 PM?
So moved, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, everybody.